They blocked off that part of the parking lot, too. Remember, they blocked off that part of the parking lot, too. Oh, I didn't know that. I had to park in the other side. Online. I think she's online. Given to me by one of my clientele's in the past, he left some ties for me. His name is Bob. Very nice man. Got my slacks on. Hey, how are you doing?
She didn't die, did she? Little girl?
One minute, one minute. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting Wednesday, October 25th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivis-
Gave you the roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Councillors Newton.
President.
Novak.
Here.
Montague.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
McGee. And Smith.
Here.
Five councillors present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. There a proclamation coming up? Thank you. It's okay. I don't have a paper copy of it. In the packet, let me see. Oh, there it is. Thank you. Extra mile day, November 1st, 2023. Whereas the city, the Albany community acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists when an individual residence collectively go and go the extra mile in person, in personal effort, volunteerism and service. And whereas Albany, okay, the Albany community encourages residents to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment and conviction. And whereas the Albany community chooses to shine a light on, on and celebrate individuals and organizations who go the extra mile to make a difference and lift the fellow community members. And whereas Albany community acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and be proud to be support Extra Mile Day. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2023 to be Extra Mile Day in the City of Albany. And I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day, not only to go the extra mile in their own life, but to ask, acknowledge, also acknowledge those who are inspirational in their efforts and commit, commitment to make our organizations, families, community, country and world a better place. And witness whereof, I here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany be affixed this day, September, October 25th, 2023. Alexander D. Johnson, Mayor. Need some water. Next on tonight's agenda, special presentations. First up is Bio Solids Compost Facility Special Recognition by Engineer Kristen Preston. You're engineer, correct?
I am, yep.
Check in.
And I'm proud of that. All right, so tonight we have a special presentation to let you know that the city's been recognized for some great work that we're doing in Public Works. And I wanted to share this with the council and also with the public who may be watching. We don't often celebrate ourselves in public works and I think many of our customers might take our services for granted sometimes because when you turn on the faucet, you get clean water without thinking about it. When you drive up to an intersection, the signal gets you safely through the traffic. And when you flush the toilet, it all magically goes away. Until it doesn't. And that's when people really notice us. But of course, we respond and help fix the situation when we have service disruptions. So we kind of like not being noticed. So this attention tonight is probably uncomfortable for some of us. But it's important that we appreciate the essential services that Public Works provides and for you to all know that we're doing it in innovative ways. So tonight, we're talking about the Albany Millersburg Water Reclamation Facility. And that's where all those toilets flushed to. Each year, over 3 billion gallons of dirty water from our homes, businesses and industries all goes to one place, our wastewater treatment plant, where it gets treated so that clean water can be safely returned to the river. It's pretty amazing that all day, every day, right now, this is happening. And it's all taken care of by just six people who operate the plant. And some of those folks are here tonight to be recognized. So part of the treatment process at the plant results in waste solids that we have to treat. And as known, we call them biosolids. As many of you know, that the solid, know that our solids treatment process that was installed when the plant was first built failed to perform properly. So we've been sending those waste solids to the landfill. And as you can imagine, that's very expensive. It's not environmentally sustainable. So for years, we've been evaluating solutions. And with the help of engineers from Kennedy James Consultants, we selected a composting process to treat our biosolids. This new composting facility was constructed last year. And it's an engineered system that produces what's known as Class A exceptional quality compost that is highly treated to meet EPA and DEQ requirements. So what's produced is a desirable material that you can use anywhere in your yard or garden as a soil amendment or as a mulch. We've been using this around the city already with great success. So your investment in this facility to turn a waste into a usable product is the reason that the city's been recognized. And we've been receiving awards, which I want to talk about. So we belong to many wastewater trade organizations and associations that city staff are active members. And these organizations represent our peers in the wastewater and water quality profession. And they've selected us for awards this year for our composting project. Which is a great honor, especially given all the other great projects that other communities are also doing. So I'm going to list the awards here. From the Oregon Association of Clean Water Agencies, known as Oregon Aqua, for, we received the 2023 Outstanding Member Agency Award. And we shared this award with Kennedy James, who are also Aqua members. And we received that award at their annual conference this summer. From the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association, it's a wastewater trade association that spans Oregon, Washington and Idaho, we received the 2023 Sustainability Resource Recovery Award. And we received that award at their annual conference in Tacoma earlier this fall. And at that same conference, one of our employees, Joe Cable, he's on our wastewater collections crew. They maintain our underground sewer pipes and infrastructure. He was named Wastewater Collections Operator of the Year for Oregon, which is pretty impressive. And he is, does not make attention, so he's not here tonight, but we congratulate him. And lastly, the League of Oriented Cities, we received the 2023 Award for Excellence for large cities. As a mayor and city manager, we were there to accept that award for, for the city at their annual conference. And at that conference, they presented a short presentation that I'd like to share now that really shows off our project. And I think Kenzie might have that to load it up to present.
You said one step.
Oh, okay.
The Albany Millersburg Water Reclamation Facility has been disposing of 20 dumpsters of biosolids per week at the local landfill at a cost of more than $700,000 per year. This created significant workload for staff and impacted local neighborhoods, both with truck traffic and odors. It was economically and environmentally unsustainable. After an extensive analysis, a composting process was selected that transformed solids into Class A exceptional quality compost, a proven technology that's made a positive environmental impact. Completed in January, Albany's composting facility was designed to treat 25% of biosolids and will eventually compost up to 100% of the biosolid load. Construction utilizing inexpensive materials, but to limit costs and provide flexibility. The system now produces Class A product that meets stringent EPA requirements and can be applied anywhere, including home vegetable gardens, without the restrictions associated with Class B biosolids. The compost has been used at city parks, stormwater facilities and given away to partners. Albany will continue to develop its biosolids program, expanding its composting facilities to provide even greater cost savings and environmental benefit. Congratulations to the City of Albany, co-recipient of this year's award for excellence.
Yeah, I thought that was a, a nice presentation that summarizes our project. So tonight, we have several people from city staff and our consultants around here who contributed to this project and deserve some recognition for their good work. So I'm going to list their names. And when I'm all done, I thought it might be good if everyone could come up. Maybe we could take a picture of the mayor and our awards, if you don't mind. They also brought small buckets of compost over there for each of you to share. And I guess I would invite you, if you've not been to our facility for a tour, we would invite you to, to see the new composting facility and our wastewater treatment plant. Okay, so I'm going to start with the operators at the plant, those six people that make it all happen. Jeff Olson, he's our lead operator. Stephen B., Kevin Brown, Eric Whitcher, Craig Campbell, Izzy Figueroa. And Izzy's our treatment technician who does most of the biosolids material handling, so he has extra things. We also have Brian Stevens, our treatment plant supervisor. Craig Prosser, wastewater superintendent. Nolan Nelson, he's an engineer from Public Works who managed the project from start to finish. We have some consultants here. We've got Mark, I'm sorry, Charles Wright, our senior associate engineer from Kennedy James that led the design for us through construction. And Mark Collington, Vice President at Kennedy James. The city's worked with Mark for a long time and he's a leader in the state for biosolids and water, water quality. And lastly, our fearless director, Chris Bailey, who's leading the way. So thank you, everybody. And before they all come up for a picture, I just wanted to thank you all for your support and attention tonight. And just pause to see if you have any questions or comments before I shuffle around with pictures.
I think this is amazing. And I really want to thank you on behalf of the city that you guys are are doing, you know, a solid thing for the, for the city. Really appreciate the cop saving, innovation and that's the good work. That's amazing.
Thank you.
It's no secret, I'm a huge gardener. I love playing my yard. I'm curious what you're naming the compost and if you have a name yet, maybe soil and brown.
Obvious, obviously joking, but I think this is phenomenal. Yeah, we don't have a name yet. We've been tossing things around.
Yeah, I, I will say that I didn't have an opportunity to take the tour the last time it was offered. But I'm a little more free now, or will be soon. And so I'm looking forward to checking it all out in person.
Sure, we'd love to have you.
I did take the tour, both before and after. And it's, it's remarkable. I'm especially pleased that it's now something that can be used on food chain crops. So that's a big step up. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to just note that the process by which it took to get here was not the most normal, to say the least. And had it not worked out the way it does, had not the biosolids need shown up, we wouldn't have this wonderful situation we're in right now. So there's a positive that has come out of the whole process going on so far.
Thank you, Counselors. I would like to say that I'm so excited to accept the award on behalf of the staff. And I gave a short speech. I can't play it in public, but it was wonderful to have this award presented to the City of Albany. And I thank all of you for the work you guys put in.
Thank you so much. Please, can you come up for a picture?
Doctor McGee, you here? Oh, you're online?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to, yeah, say something? Would you like to say something?
Me?
Yes.
No, I'm just, it was a, it's a, no, I don't. Sorry. I'm just getting on. So I'm just getting acclimated here to fire you off.
Okay, thank you.
Stand in front, stand in front here.
Right over your shoulder?
All people in the back. Over here. All people in back. We know where we go.
Yeah, get them.
There we go, all right.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Ken. How, how much does the compost cost? So you are selling your compost yet? Okay.
That's a good question. When will that apparatus be set? I'll, I'll hit the director later. Uh, next on tonight's agenda is, oh, she's sitting right now?
I'm sorry.
I'll ask you later. Oh, you got, okay, go ahead.
Um, so our plan is to come back in the springtime with a plan for how we're going to roll it out to the public. Maybe talk about a name and talk about what we're going to charge. So where to come.
I did offer the other mayors to reach out to our city and to buy it from us, too, so.
Sure, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda for special presentation is Community Service Consortium, Peggy McGuire. Pages four through 18 in the packet. I think there'll be a presentation on the screen, correct?
Good evening. Thanks for her giving me some time on your agenda today. Peggy McGuire here. I'm the Executive Director of Community Services Consortium, also known as CSC. And we are the state and federally recognized community action agency for Lynn, Benton and Lincoln Counties. I have a little slide presentation for you today. Mostly, I'm here to answer any questions you have, give you a little bit of information. And then further in your packet is a sample resolution. I'm hoping that you will support what I'm proposing tonight and be able to pass a resolution. And let me put that in a packet of materials that I will submit to HUD. So I'm not seeing the slides up here, but I understand you have them on your packet.
It's in the packet. She doesn't have the slides.
Okay.
It was on the screen earlier.
That's okay. You've got them in your packet and I'm happy to go through them with you. So the first couple of slides, slides number one and two are just really about me and CSC. And then pages, or slides three and four are talking about the structure of a continuum of care. What I really want you to know about a continuum of care is that we are obligated, if we want to apply for HUD Continuum of Care nationally competitive funds, to be part of a continuum of care. And we are currently part of the 26 county rural Oregon Continuum of Care, also known as The Rock. And what I'm proposing is that we remove ourselves from The Rock and be a tri-county continuum of Lynn, Benton and Lincoln Counties. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about why I feel strongly about that. So slide number five, which looks like this, is a little map that gives us the information that HUD grades a continuum of care on and as a report card. So it includes things like, how many people fell into homelessness in your community? How many people did you get out of homelessness? How many people returned to homelessness? How long were they unhoused? How many people got jobs after you got them out of homelessness? And I'll just tell you quite frankly, the rural Oregon Continuum of Care doesn't have a very good report card. As you can imagine, a balance of state continuum, the size of The Rock, is just very unwieldy. We cover so many disparate communities with disparate levels of resources. In those 26 counties, it's very hard to get some consistent and solid and highly competitive outcomes. And these rankings and ratings that HUD measures us with cause us to be ranked and rated against the entire nation. So communities like Los Angeles, San Diego, Chicago, compared to the balance of state of Oregon. Slide number six is a map of Oregon. And the blue counties that are on your slide are the members of The Rock. The gray counties are currently separate and distinct continuums. So for example, Jackson County, Marion and Polk are their own continuum. Central Oregon has a continuum of three counties. And when HUD designed this system of continuums of care, they have created processes that try to push continuums together, to have bigger and bigger continuums because it's less unwieldy for them to be able to manage the application process and the granting process. But it's more difficult for the communities to do. And the governor signaled her clear intent, and she has since talked about this, of having a plan to send money out through the continuums of care to address homelessness. And this became very clear when she first came into office with Executive Orders 2302 and 2303. 2302 distinctly called out those gray counties and said, and by the way, we have more than $100 million that we're going to allocate between you all. And then, when the rest of the counties said, oh yeah, and what about us? She said, um, yeah, well, we'll figure that out later. And the representatives, the state legislature, put forward a proposal in House Bill 5019 that allocated $26 million to be split between these 26 counties by formula. Some of it was competitive, so our Lynn, Benton and Lincoln area got by formula just over $3 million. And what really made me angry about this whole process was that when I looked at what the existing continuums got, Jackson County, which has fewer population, a lower population than we have in our tri-county region, got 8.8 million direct allocation. Marion and Polk Counties got more than 10 million. And we got just a little over three, like I said. So that's not going to work going forward. And I am not going to stand for it. In my opinion, that creates a situation in which the rural communities continue to have a lower level of support and continue to not do well in responding to homelessness. And frankly, because we're smaller, we have a better ability to get a handle on it and to be able to create some systems that will really seriously make some change. So slide number seven, it looks like this. And you, many of you know a lot about what's going on in Lynn County related to homelessness. We have the Hart Board. Counselor Smith has a long time been a member of the Hart Board and attends those meetings where many of the providers are coming together, talking about these issues and having discreet activities where they address homelessness. And then, we got the House Bill 5019 funding, which I mentioned to you. And that is requiring us to create 30 emergency housing beds and rehouse 34 people who have not been, or sorry, 32 people who have not been previously housed. And so we are working together right now with all the right people at the table with our multi-agency coordinating group, which was a requirement of the House Bill 5019 legislation that we formed that group. We've got all the right folks at the table. And I'd like to continue that work and continue that momentum and move this forward in a tri-county continuum of care. So the next slide, which is slide number eight, talks about what's happening across the tri-county region. Lincoln and Benton Counties, in a previous legislative session, received House Bill 4123 funding to create a navigation center and develop a system and a strategy to address homelessness. Then they received House Bill 5019 funding. They got an assignment of how many emergency shelter beds they each need to create, how many people they need to rapidly rehouse. And they will use those funds to kind of do a test drive to see if their system that they're creating works. It'll be really an opportunity to put some boots on the ground and see if, what might need to be tweaked. And again, they have all the right people at the table. This is the right time for us to move forward and create our own continuum. And then continue at bringing those same people to the table and really get some good work done around this issue. And move forward and apply as our own continuum for continuum of care funding. In the last round of funding, Jackson Street Youth Services wanted to apply for some additional funding for runaway and homeless youth. And The Rock said- for runaway and homeless youth, and The Rock said, "No, sorry, we can't do that consistently across the entire balance of state continuum, so you can't submit a proposal." Marion and Polk Counties, at the same time, submitted a proposal, and they were awarded funding. So since they pulled out of the rural Oregon Continuum of Care several years ago, they have continued to successfully add more funding to their efforts around homelessness. And that momentum and that energy draws additional funding that comes from outside of the system of HUD. So it's not just about what we can get from HUD. It's really creating that groundswell of work and, and really thinking through how we can most efficiently and effectively serve folks who are homeless, identifying the gaps, and really driving that work to the, to meet the standards and the requirements of our communities and making that decision, those decisions locally. This little blurry blob here that I have as slide number nine is a map that the consultant in Lincoln County created. And the reason that I have that on there is just to show you, Lincoln County is a small community, but they found over 100 organizations that were touching individuals who were unhoused. That included faith-based organizations, local community providers like my agency, shelter providers, and the police department, the library. People were going places to get out of the rain. Police department was talking to people who were unhoused. And what we realized was that we were not all working together closely in identifying and tracking the folks who are unhoused and figuring out how we can most effectively and efficiently use all of our resources. So that's the kinda work that we will continue to do as a continuum. And that's the kinda mapping that I'd like to do in our community in Lynn County. It's kinda mapping I'd like to do in Benton County. The next slide, which it appears that it didn't quite come through the process quite well, is actually just telling you what the providers are doing. They're doing everything from street outreach to housing navigation, literally helping people navigate their resources to get deposit assistance, to get rent assistance, or to get some sort of housing. Some people just can't navigate that process of finding housing on their own. There is data collection and analytics. There's a spectrum of housing that's being provided. Everything from emergency housing, which may mean camping, as you well know, all the way through to permanent supportive housing, where people are getting subsidized housing and intensive wraparound services. Oftentimes, agencies like CSC can get people into housing, but because of the just complexity of the things that they have going on, it's very difficult to keep them housed. So that intensive case management and wraparound services is fundamental to that. And then, finally, what I have for you in the next two slides is just a little bit about the process. When Marion and Polk Counties pulled out of The Rock a couple of years ago, nationally, that had never happened. So HUD had to hire a technical assistance provider for the Portland HUD field offices and a technical assistance provider for Marion and Polk Counties to figure out how to do this. And this is the glide path that they created. They've been very generous in helping that, helping us with that, sharing that process with us. And so the first step is I'm, we had a vote among many of the stakeholders, such as all of those local planning groups I mentioned previously. We came together in July in Corvallis, and unanimously, people voted to pull out of The Rock. And now I'm making the rounds to every single city council in Lincoln, Benton, and Lynn Counties and talking to them and asking for their support via a resolution that I can put in a packet together, so they know they didn't, I didn't just cook this up in my garage on my own, that my communities that I serve are supportive of this effort. We'll be asking each of the local planning groups to do a formal vote. We'll be asking all of our nonprofit and other providers to write letters of support. I'll put those all in a packet with the other required materials to show that we have all the elements in place to appropriately run our own continuum. I'll submit that to HUD, and God willing, this time next year, we'll all be applying as our own tri-county continuum for the HUD dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I also know that for those of you who this is not something that you commonly deal with, this can be a really crazy and confusing topic. Lot of acronyms, a lot of mishmash about who's working together and how that's happening. I'm also very happy to have any conversation offline with you to go into it in more detail.
Counsel, any questions? Counselor Novak, you're up.
Thank you. What you're saying makes sense, and I appreciate that. I just had a question with regard to the information that I was reviewing earlier. If, if I'm understanding correctly, we were given $1.78 million to impact 30 shelter beds or create 30 shelter beds and help 32 households. And I'll, I just added, so 62 either beds or households, 1.78 million. That comes to $28,709.68 per bed?
Actually, Counselor, that money has to cover, well, we're about a year and a half into it now. It has to go through June of 2025. So if you think about people who we are supposed to rapidly rehouse, the idea is to create a stable situation for them so that at the end of that period of time that we put them in housing, they don't just fall back into homelessness. So we have to create some process whereby their rent is gonna be paid for a long term. And we're working closely with the Lynn, Benton Housing Authority that has offered up some vouchers to prioritize those clients. And so the beds themselves that are being created won't, won't be $28,000 per bed, per person, but there's a lot of other things that are going into that.
Thank you for that clarification, because I was a little stricken. I'm like, that can't be right.
Well, and by the way, I'll just let you know that many organizations are coming to the table, committing resources to this outside of that funding, because this funding itself is not enough to do the job.
One time, yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Montague?
So in this, did you discuss with all these partners any risks in leaving The Rock?
I did, that's a great question. So the biggest risk is there is no money to run, run a continuum of care. And that's part of the problem of The Rock, that they're severely understaffed. And they're just, in addition to being such a large and unwieldy area, it's really hard to do the work that needs to be done. There are required committees that have to be sustained and supported. There is work that has to be done around the Homeless Management Information System, which is the data collection and repository process and place for the work that is done, because all of that information rolls up to the state and then to the nation and then goes into a report in Congress. And it's also the system that we use to look up clients and to share information about clients. So there's, and do the data analytics about how we do this work. So somebody has to manage that process. Somebody has to manage a coordinated entry process, which is how you kind of rate and rank the vulnerability of the clients based on information that you've done with the client, taken with the clients. And then ideally, those clients who are most vulnerable will be placed in housing first. Not to be confused with a waitlist, because there are so many people, we will never get through the entire coordinated list, entry list. But there has to be that process. And then there also has to be somebody who's running the business of the entity. So it's usually run in a democratic process, so somebody has to convene that. And then all of the reporting, whenever you get money, there's reporting that's required with it. So there's all of that as well. The pro, the concern and the biggest risk, CSC is stepping up to take over that role in the, in the near term, so for the next few years, because we're already receiving funding to do it. Oh, by the way, and also the point in time count. The continuum is responsible for the annual point in time count. So we're gonna do that, but the group may decide they wanna run themselves differently. And so if that happens, then they will have to figure out how they're gonna support that work.
Just, so I make sure I, I understood you. So the biggest risk is that initial infrastructure. You need to kind of figure that out. But you have a plan, it sounds like, that CSC is going to step up in, in the meantime, temporarily while that infrastructure gets in place?
Exactly.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith? Oh, excuse me, Counselor Newton was first.
I was curious, when you leave The Rock, do you have an anticipated amount that you'd be able to receive in regards to the executive order?
No, the, what we've got is what we've got.
Okay.
And by the way, Lynn County asked to be included in the Executive Order 2302, as you know. And when we got included, we said, "Well, what about, what about getting access to this, part of this 100-plus million?" And, and we were told, "No, sorry, that's not part of the deal."
Even, even though we're included in 2309?
Yeah.
Okay. Interesting.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Counselor Smith? Thank you, Counselor Newton.
I wanted to say that Albany is a step ahead of a lot of communities in Oregon in that we've been having these conversations among the people who are providing services for the last 17 years. That started in this room in November of 2006, when we had Albany's first community summit on homelessness. There were 95 people representing every service agency you could imagine in the Albany area. And that was what created the HART Group. And that group has been meeting monthly, every month since then. So the, the right people have been in the room for a long time. The, with the governor's executive order, it expanded it to create the county group. And the rest of the right people are now part of the conversation. So the group is working very well together. They put together some wonderful proposals for how to spend the money that we might get. The proposals added up to a lot more than was allocated, but it was a way of showing the state of Oregon that the, these were the needs in Lynn County. And when that money is available, we're ready to spend it in these ways. So this is a natural step. We have, we've been behind the door when the money's been passed out forever. And we need to be, we're, Albany's the third largest, fastest-growing city in the state. This is a fast-growing region, the three counties, and we need to be our own continuum of care. So I strongly support this.
Thank you so much, well said.
Counselor Kapczynski?
I'm okay.
Thank you. I would say I'm happy this is happening. I know that there's, you guys are also working on the merging with the, with the COGS. And how's that gonna play into the grand scheme of this, The Rock?
That's a great question. We don't know exactly. So the COG does a lot of compatible work to what CSC does. And Ryan Vogt, my peer at the COG, is just an amazing partner. And he and I work really closely. We have meetings every two weeks, figuring out how we're able to braid and support one another and braid funding and resources and figure out how our teams can work better together. We have teams from each of the organizations, meeting together and talking together and working together to develop good handoff processes for the clients, figure out which clients are eligible for which services that aren't already getting those services. So there are a lot of things already in place for the people that, that are easy to serve and that we're already serving. What I think this will do, and Ryan's fully on board with this, is to really begin to look at solidifying some processes and looking for some other pieces that we can work on together to support folks who are currently falling through the gaps.
Thank you for that. I did, or Dr. McGee, you have a question? Answer.
I did, thank you. I was just gonna ask, I think Counselor Montague had a question in regards to the infrastructure, and you answered it, that you guys will be taking over it. Now, do you plan to train those people in place when you all are done being the infrastructure?
Well, that's a great question. We don't, there's no plan, but I have to tell you that we have such a vested interest in this and will solidly be at the table all the way along that we would never think of walking away and not doing that. So that's, this is a CSC role for the long term, whether we're running things or whether we're just at the table.
Okay, thank you.
So I would like to finish the, the reason I ask the question is because seniors are dear and dear to me. I have thousands of clients, and when I see a senior that's in an unhoused situation, it breaks my heart. And I was really happy to see the CMS put in 2024 that a senior, a person that's unhoused, you can use a shelter, your doctor's office, to receive your medications and your benefits. So several people that I know have used, are gonna use my office to get their medications shipped to me, because I, it just breaks my heart seeing anyone out there. But somebody that's paid taxes in this city for 50, 60 years that are struggling with housing is, it's, it's just painful to see.
Absolutely, but well said, Mayor. And I just wanna say, and you and I have had this conversation a number of times about the seniors, is that that's the fastest-growing population that we're seeing becoming unhoused.
Right, and that's distressing.
Very.
So anything I can do for you as far as helping with senior information, training, whatever, just let me know and I'll be there for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Alright, Counsel, are we done with asking questions? Okay, there's a resolution on page nine, I believe.
I think it's page 18 of the packet.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
I've got that.
Page 18, I'm sorry.
I move we, uh, wait, this is a resolution.
It's the same.
I move we approve resolution in support of establishing a continuum of care for the Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties region and registering with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, I really appreciate it.
Next on tonight's agenda is a legislative and quasi-judicial public hearing regarding planning files AN01-023 and ZC, or Zebra Charlie, dash 03, dash 23. The proposal is an annexation of a 97, 8.97-acre tract and a .3-acre property with the concurrent zoning map amendments to residential, single-family RS65 and open space zoning districts. The annexation will also remove the property from the taxing district of the Albany Rural Fire Protection District. I call to order this legislative and quasi-judicial public hearing at 6:41 PM. If you wish to testify, there are three options available, which, which we'll describe in the agenda. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? None? Do any members wish to report and ex parte contact? Yep. Do any members wish to report a site visit?
I can report I'm familiar with the location, that's all.
Thank you. Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Right, it's gonna be here. Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation in council meetings in this hearing and decision? If so, please raise your hand if you're attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. Hands, okay, good. At this time, I'll call for the reading of the meeting procedures.
Thank you. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the approval standards this staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
At this time, I'll call for a staff report from project planner Jennifer Capella, Cappello. Is it Capella or Cappello?
Cappello.
Thank you, Cappello, thank you.
Yeah, no worries. So this is land use files AN01-23 and ZC-0323. This application is a request to annex an 8.78-acre tract of land located to the west of 1580 53rd Avenue and a 0.30-acre acre property. and is zero-point-three-zero acre property at 1894 53rd Avenue, together with a request to apply for the RS-6.5 and open space zoning districts to the properties. The properties are currently located within the urban growth area and is contiguous to the city limits on at least two sides. The applicants are the property owners Melinda Martin and Scott and Tammy Laughlin. The map on the left shows that the properties are designated low residential, low-density residential and open space in the Albany Comprehensive Plan. The map on the right shows that the properties are bordered by RS-6.5 zoning district, sorry. The property to the west and south remains within the Lynn County jurisdiction and is currently zoned UGA, UGM-20. The process is a type-four process, which is a decision-making criteria. It's an annexation in ADC 2.110 and the zoning map amendment in ADC 2.740. There is an agency notice followed by public notices. The Planning Commission held a meeting on October 2nd of this year and recommended approval. And then the city council is the final decision at this public hearing tonight. This annexation, sorry, request meets all four of the criteria. The properties are eligible to annex, and it is timely to annex since the site has access to public streets and utilities. Adequate planning has occurred in terms of comprehensive plan map designation and anticipated future development. And it is reasonable to annex, provided that the city council makes that decision tonight. The applicants have also applied to amend the zoning designation of the properties. This request was evaluated against the zoning map amendment review criterion ADC 2.740. According to the Comprehensive Plan Map, the Laughlin's property at 1894 53rd Avenue is designated as low-density residential. The Martins' tract was designated as low-density residential and open space. The applicants propose the zoning of RS-6.5 and OS zones, which are consistent with these designations. The public notice regarding this application was mailed to property owners within three hundred feet on September 11th of 2013. The staff report with exhibits were posted on the planning, on the Planning Commission and property, planning projects homepage since September 26th of 2023. The Albany Democrat Herald notice was published on September 14th, and the site was posted on September 13th in two locations. One on Midway, on the front property line of 1894 53rd Avenue and Midway along the undeveloped tract of 53rd. As of this time and 3:00 PM today, there, we have received no comments. In conclusion, the subject properties are eligible for annexation as they are contiguous to the city limits, located within the Albany urban growth boundary, and can be served by public services. With the annexation, the subject properties will also be removed from the taxing district of the Albany Rural Fire Protection District. In conclusion, the staff analysis finds that the availability of utilities and infrastructure make the eight-point-seven-eight acre tract with the zero-point-three acre property ideal candidates for development within the city. The requested RS-6.5 and OS zoning designations are consistent with the site's comprehensive plan designation as low-density residential and open space. On balance, the evidence supports the annexation and assigning the zoning designation of RS-6.5 and open space to the subject properties. As proposed in condition, this application satisfies all the applicable review criteria as outlined in the report. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested as condition.
Thank you.
And that concludes my staff report.
Does any council members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? I have one. Can you put the slide back up with the, the land on it, please, the one before?
This one?
So, yes, there's a park right there on the bottom right. People go through that, oh, sorry about that. There's a park right there on the bottom right of the screen. People come from my neighborhood and walk through that. Is that gonna change that pathway with that development there, or reroute that path in any way?
I believe the path connects further to the east and then crosses 53rd. So the proposed annexation would not change any designated paths.
Thank you very much, 'cause I know people like to walk that path.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the path actually goes the corner, across the corner of Talo, Kalafuya Park there, and comes around and actually, looking at the, it actually, on the, on the right side, where you see that light, I don't know if you, you can't see it on my screen, I'm sure, the top portion of those two lots.
Yes.
Kind of a, a light, a real light brown area. The path winds around through that, goes up to 53rd, and then it, and then you can hang right on 53rd and then come over to another area underneath where it says, where the, says Avenue. There's kind of a light brown area right there. That's where the path then picks up again to start walking around that neighborhood north. So that, for the whole pathway. So, yes, that whole path would be demonstrably affected if and when any development actually occurred in that area.
Okay. We can have the applicant address the location of the path.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Counselors. Counselor McGee, you have anything? Counselor Newton?
I was just curious about the intention of what the land was being used for. I know it's low-density housing, but just curious to hear if there are any plans already.
They'll be up to talk about that, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the applicant will be able to address that question. But there's been nothing applied for at this time, just the annexation.
Okay, thank you very much for your report. We will, we will now take testimony from the applicant. Will the applicant please state your name? I don't like giving addresses in public, but is, do I have to do that? No, it's about their actual address, it's not that property address. Says an address to make any comments that they have for the council. Thank you for coming.
Hello, Mayor and Council. So nice to be here. My name's Melinda Martin, and I'm the applicant for this application. And I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counselor? Thank you for coming. Any questions?
I think just the ones about the path and what we've already.
The path is not on any of this property at all.
You've walked it?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. You know, everybody else good?
And then, do you have, do you have any plans that you'd like?
No, not at all. It's been in the county, and it's within the comprehensive plan to join the city. And so if anything's gonna happen to it, it needs to be annexed and rezoned. And so that's just this first step.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor Novak.
And forgive me if this was in the packet and I missed it or have forgotten, but it, it was zoned originally for low-density housing. It's gonna be rezoned for?
The same.
For the same?
It's just been, it's been zoned in the county, and now we want to have the same zoning for the city.
Thank you kindly. I'm, I'm glad you're not changing the zoning.
Thank you. Yeah, perfect. Anybody else? Thank you. Okay, we will now be taking public testimony from, first from those in favor of the applicants, applications, followed by those in opposition to the applicants or with concerns, and finally, from anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and email it to the address provided in the packet. Do we have any public testimony?
No one has signed up, Your Honor.
No one has signed up, thank you very much for that. Those who registered to speak during this meeting will now be called upon. So nobody did sign up? Perfect. I would, I have to read this anyway. Followed by those who did not register to speak. Does any member in the audience or attending virtually wish to speak in favor of the applicant, application? Does any member of the audience or attending virtually wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? Does any member of the audience attending virtually wish to speak neutrally of the application? Does the applicant have any, there's no rebuttal testimony to have. But I still have to ask this question. Does any applicant have any rebuttal testimony? There's none. The next item nineteen is, does any staff member wish to respond to the testimony? Didn't think so. Does anyone have procedural questions that would like to, they would like to raise at this time? If so, please raise your hand, or if you're attending in person. If you are attending virtually, please short turn on your camera and raise your hand or to be called upon. Or if you're attending by phone, unmute yourself and state your name to be called upon. Nothing, crickets. I declare this public hearing closed at six fifty-four PM. Does the city council, would you like to discuss the case?
Um, I wanted to just go ahead and, well, if anyone, I wanted to just go ahead and make a motion to approve the annexation with the zoning map amendment. And I want to move that the city council adopt an ordinance that would approve the land use application for annexation with concurrent rezones of RS-6.5 and OS under planning files AN-0123 and ZC-0323, as described in the September 25th. What? I am?
Yeah, Counselor Newton, we'll need to read the ordinance first and then a second time.
Okay. Okay. We have to read the ordinance first.
You can't circumvent the law.
All right.
There are two, um, so does the council, city council wish to discuss the case? Thank you. And I do have to read this by law, just to, just so you're clear. The ordinance proclaiming annexations with the city, my attorney, please read the ordinance and proclaiming it entitled only.
I'm gonna make an attempt, Mayor, with my voice. Peter's gonna be my emergency backup.
Okay.
An ordinance proclaiming annexation of property identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map number 11S-04W-24C as tax slots 600, 700, and 1100 and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Would a counselor like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time and title only?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Will the clerk do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Counselors Montague?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Newton?
Yes.
Kupczynski?
Aye.
Motion has sufficient to, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next is ordinance withdrawing property.
I'm gonna read it the second time now, yep. An ordinance proclaiming annexation of property identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map number 11S-04W-24C as tax slots 600, 700, and 1100 and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions. And now, Your Honor, there's a, a motion on the sheet.
On the sheet here.
We'll make that, yeah.
So would a counselor like to make a motion?
That was the motion that Counselor Newton. I want to make the motion to approve the annexation with zoning map amendment.
Second.
I have a motion and two seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, wait. Go ahead.
It, can you guys use the, the one that's on our sheet, the motion to approve? When, we need that for, or something, so.
Okay, all right, I got it.
I got it.
Okay.
I move the city council adopt the ordinance that would approve the land use application for annexation and concurrent rezones to RS-6.5 and OS under planning files AN-0123 and ZC-0323, as described in the September 25th, 2023 staff report. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report and testimony presented at the hearings and the findings in support of the application made by the city council during deliberations on this matter.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Now we're good, thank you.
Now we're good.
Now we do the second one, right?
Yep, we can do the second one. I'll go ahead and read it the first time. And what this one is, is just removing the, the property that just got annexed from the rural fire district, and it'll be in the city's fire district, so.
An ordinance withdrawing the property from the Albany Fire, Rural Fire Protection District. Would the city attorney, please read the ordinance withdrawing the property from Albany Rural Fire District, Protection District, entitled only.
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map number 11S-04W-24C as tax slots 600, 700, and 1100 from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Would a counselor like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time and title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. City attorney?
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map number 11S-04W-24C as tax slots 600, 700, and 1100 from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
All those, a motion and a second?
I move that the city council adopt an ordinance that would withdraw an eight-point-seven-eight acre tract of land located west of 1580 53rd Avenue Southwest and a point-three acre property located at 1894 53rd Avenue Southwest from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Thank you. The decision, do you want to do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The question is on passage of the ordinance. Counselor Montague?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Kupczynski?
Yes.
The ordinance passes six to, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. The decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice to, of intent to appeal no later than twenty-one days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days of the adoption of the amendment or a new land use regulation, the director shall forward the Department of Land Use, Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted amendments and findings and notify the Department of any substantial changes which in, which may have occurred in the proposal since the, any previous mod, notification to the department. Thank you very much. We did already close it.
Okay.
We can't do anything, yeah.
Right.
Next on tonight's agenda is pathways to removing obstacles, PRO, to housing grant application and Catlin, pages fifty-two to one oh nine of your packet.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselors. I, Kenzie, I started sharing my screen maybe a few minutes too early, but I don't know if you could get my slides up. So, um, we are here tonight to hold a required public hearing because the City of Albany is applying for this grant, which is available through HUD, for infrastructure funding associated with a project that the Farmworker Housing Development Corporation, and I have with me Carmen Fernandez from FHDC, to help them leverage money to build an affordable housing community and also provide a childcare center.
Let me go ahead and open the public hearing, and then we can go continue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing to receive comments on the city's pathways to removing obstacles in housing and PRO, by PRO housing, grant application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, for infrastructure funding of the Goldfish Farm Road improvements through 4400 Spicer Road. For those who wish to testify, there's three options available, which were described in the council's agenda. I declare the public hearing open at seven oh PM. Does the staff have a report? Now you're going.
Yeah, thank you, sorry about that. I'm just jumping the gun. So we are here tonight. One of the reasons why we're here tonight is because the city does not really have a dedicated source of funds to help support the development of much-needed affordable housing in our community. And when I saw this opportunity come through HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, I thought, wow, maybe we can bring some much-needed funding into Albany and so support a project that's in works. So we looked at our partners that are doing good work in our area, and Farmworker Housing Development Corporation recently finished a development in Lebanon, fully leased up, it's got a long waiting list, anyway. They are also proposing a development in Albany, 4400 Spicer Road. But they are trying to get money from the state, and they're trying for round two of funding, and they could really use help for public infrastructure. And this grant allows for that kind of assistance, and we're eligible to apply for it as a local government. So we are applying for funding for the public improvements, which would be to construct Goldfish Farm Road, that's an arterial road. So we are applying for funding for the public improvements, which would be to construct Goldfish Farm Road, that's an arterial road, the public sewer and storm drainage. The total project cost is about two point seven million, that's all engineering design, all that contingencies. And we are requesting a portion of that from HUD, one million eight hundred fifty seven thousand, six hundred thirty eight dollars, which is a slightly different number. I'll, I'll have you know that I had a little typo or we, we had some adjusted numbers for a contribution we will be making in the form of a transportation systems development charge credit. So the resolution in your packet's been slightly modified and the mayor has the right one to sign tomorrow. But the grant doesn't require a match, but we would score, we would receive points for providing a match. And you may remember that at the end of last year, you awarded funding to the Farmworker Housing Development Corporation, the Senate Bill five five six one funds. Those haven't been actually allocated yet, but those would go specifically for this project to help with that infrastructure funding. And then because this is in the transportation systems plan, this improvement is eligible for SDC credits for transportation. And then Farmworker Housing Development Corporation, they've, they raised a lot of money and received grants to purchase the property, but they also have additional funds available to support the difference. So there are a lot of reasons to support this project and it will get a public improvement, but this project is planned to provide at least a hundred and sixty affordable housing units and that's for people earning less than eighty percent of their immediate income. Many of those households were in far fewer. They have both plans for apartments and some homeownership opportunities, which we're really excited about. And they provide multi-generational and multicultural housing and bilingual multicultural services. And they don't just provide housing, they have workforce development and really support these residents through all the stages of, of their housing journey and, and needs. And the development will provide affordable childcare center. If you have children, you know that we have, sort of have a childcare desert. It started and got worse through COVID. That's in a later phase. And then development will be built sustainably to provide healthy housing. This is an earlier concept phase that was used for an initial grant they applied for with the state. This shows about eighty two units, but because they didn't receive that funding, they're, they're scaling back their first phase to around fifty to fifty four units. And this money, if we are successful in getting it, will really help them leverage those dollars and get started. But the plan is to develop, I think, the west side of Goldfish Farm Road with apartments and avoid the wetlands. And then the childcare center and the probably townhomes would be built on the right side. They would use an existing house on the right side to, to become the childcare center. So we wanted to see if you had any questions, and I will say that there were four letters of support for this project that you received earlier today. And I think Carmen might add a few words. And we also have Darren Murphy, who's on the development team here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any questions?
I do.
Counselor Newton?
So two things. First, looking at the diagram, it is really apparent to see just how much space that all the parking takes up. It looks like you even have another, you know, I don't know, fifty apartments there. I just was wondering if that was taken into consideration for future development of, you know, not having as much parking or doing parking that's stacked, you know, like a parking structure.
We have taken that into consideration on the current phase that we're, or current packet that we're going to be submitting to OHCS on the thirteenth. We have reduced the parking space one to one versus what OHCS requirements previously were. So that is going to significantly delete some of those parking spaces as well.
Okay, cool. And then my other question was in regards to affordable childcare. So with a hundred and sixty units, how many children do you believe you'd be able to serve? Yeah, and like age ranges and facilities.
Since the land is zoned as residential, I just had this discussion yesterday, we will only be able to put a home-based childcare center there, which would only be able to serve up to about sixteen children. So the thought process I'm having is that we would look to rezone that portion of the property in order to increase the childcare capacity on that portion of the property alone. We do plan to partition the property into separate phases so that we can develop them separately. So that would be our third phase and that would be where I come back to this, I'll be working with the city to rezone that if possible.
I, I think it's allowed through a conditional use application. We can work on that, but we're, we're just trying to get the money to get going on the first phases and we'll make sure that that happens in as much of a capacity that they can do.
Yeah, that sounds great. I'm really hopeful for rezoning because especially when you think about a hundred and sixty units, maybe half of them have children that are younger. And I was also curious, what was affordable childcare considered? Like, is it like below a certain market rate?
It, it will depend on the provider. Right now, we work with the Woodburn School District in, on the property that we have there, located in the city of Woodburn. We have Cipriano Farrell Education Center and the Woodburn School District leases that from us. They provide no-cost childcare to their pre-K program. And I believe last I heard, they are serving eighty children out of that location.
Phenomenal. I hope we're able to do the same.
Any other councils have a comment or question? Go ahead.
I think this is fantastic. I'm very excited to see this happen in an area that really does need it, so.
And, and again, we're very, very excited to come to the City of Albany. We've been doing outreach here in Albany since the summer of twenty twenty one. We use this as our base when we were beginning the Lebanon Project. So currently, we finished our lease up on the Lebanon property in June and we already have a hundred and thirty five families on our waiting list.
And what I did find out was a lot of those folks came from Albany, too.
Yes.
So I went to the grand opening and calling a pause.
Yes.
And I met with Meg and talked with the folks from OH, the housing. It was beautiful with the art, the murals. I thought it was fantastic, so.
And that's what we hope to bring also to Albany.
If you haven't had a chance to go look at it, please do. It's, it's really well done. Thank you. Okay. Was there any written materials? We read the written materials. Excuse me, written materials submitted by deadline were forwarded to the city council. Written materials were submitted by Susan Heath, Cart Karen Sax, Nancy Grayman, Brian Steinhauser, and no one signed up to speak at the meeting today, has he?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I will no call upon the register to speak. There was no one called the register. I declare the public hearing closed at seven twelve PM. Counsel discussion? Would the council like to make a motion regarding the resolution on page fifty four?
Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, Anne mentioned that there are some changes to the resolution as presented. Anne, do you want to say what those changes are because the council should note that when they make their motion?
I wasn't sure if you get the revised version. I amended the transportation systems development charge amount to four hundred forty nine thousand, I think, at one hundred and seventy two dollars. And then in the now there for be it resolved line, I just removed the grant amount and just made it a little bit more general that you authorized submitting the grant. The, the calculation for the transportation systems development charge credit needed to be amended, which affected the grant amount. So. We will also, if we are successful, of course, come back to accept the grant and by resolution and there may be some, you know, other adjustments, so.
Counsel, any questions, Rand, before we move on? Would the council like to make a motion regarding the resolution on page fifty four of your packet?
I move that we approve a resolution in support of a grant application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for infrastructure funding associated with affordable housing development as amended.
Second.
I second.
This is an ordinance, right? Resolution, okay. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion pass, the resolution passes. Thank you. Uh, next on tonight's agenda is business from the public. Too many pieces of paper up here. Tina Cat, Cat Stever, Cat Stever, Gary Street Sidewalk. She still with us? Yes, she is. Welcome to the city council meeting.
Council members. I live at three three oh four Southeast Gary Street. And at the beginning of the month, the residents from Grand Prairie to Thirty Fourth Avenue on Gary Street were given, or received certified letters from Andrew Monaco from the City of Albany Engineering regarding sidewalks being put in on our section of the street. We have received very sporadic information regarding this. When someone will talk and be told one thing, someone will talk and be told another thing. Basically, what we have been explaining to us is that on the west side of Gary Street, which is Ward Two, we were going to be having eleven feet of our property taken basically away to put in a new sidewalk. There would be a five-foot landscaping strip and then a six-foot sidewalk, which basically for most of the residents takes away parking off the street. The east side, we've heard up to seven feet is, is being taken towards the sidewalk. Now, on the eleventh feet, yes, we own that five-foot landscaping strip, but it takes away any usable property for basically eleven feet of our property. The sidewalk will be practically at the front doors of some of the houses because they are very close to the street. We are concerned about the liability of having sidewalks on our properties, which we will be responsible for. We're concerned about security and loss of privacy. And one of the things that is concerning is that I spoke with Andrew Monaco regarding the sidewalks. And I requested, after I had spoken with several of the neighbors up and down the street, that we could have a group meeting of the residents to discuss what really is specified in the grant that is available to do this for school safety, walking to school safety. What is actually in the grant? What is it going to look like? Because all we received was a piece of paper with a stripe. This is what it's going to look like, which doesn't tell us anything. We have no specific information on how it's going to affect our driveways. Are we going to need to put in new driveways to match the new sidewalks that are going in? And everyone is basically very concerned about privacy because we've, most of the people there have lived there a long time. I've lived there myself for thirty two years. And we, we're, we're used to a certain level of privacy. We're used to not having to park in the street. When people are having to park in the street, there's more danger to your vehicles and your possessions. And so we would just like, if the city could come up with a way to be more transparent with what this entails.
What, what I will ask you to do is give your contact information to that gentleman sitting right there and I'll make sure somebody will get ahold of you and work with you on this.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
So make sure, yeah, make sure he has your contact. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is somebody we all know and love, Ray Hiltz. How's it going, Ray?
Hi. Ray Hiltz from Albany, Oregon. At the last meeting, a discussion and a motion was made by Counselor Smith in regards to the flying of the flags. According to the Department of Administrative Services, which I understand that was given to you last week, or last month, it talks about operations and the subject, flag protocol at public buildings. And the purpose, it says, is to establish protocol for flying the United States flag, the Oregon flag, and the POW MIA flag simultaneously at public buildings. If the guidelines, if not all three flags can be flown, the United States flag and the Oregon State flag can be flown by itself. As an example, last month, it was told that it can only hold two flags. So according to the Department of Administrative Services, it's, you need to fly the two flags. My question, if you make exemptions, such as if I come in and I request a flag be blown, be it Black Lives Matter, be it LGBT, be it the Optimist flag, be it the Lions flag, be it West Albany's flag, that's a tough decision that you make. Who do you limit it to? Who do you give permission to? And if you award it to one organization, then why not everyone then? So you're creating, if you don't go along with this policy, you're creating a monster for yourself. I have thirty three seconds and I want all of you, I'm off the subject now. I want to invite you all to the Veterans Day breakfast at West Albany High School. And, and you can come to breakfast before you go to the parade.
Thank you, Ray.
My thoughts.
Thank you. What time does the breakfast start?
A what?
What time does it start?
Six thirty. Six thirty to nine thirty.
Six thirty, nine thirty, okay, that's better. Thank you. Okay, is any, anyone in the audience like to speak from business from the public? Thank you. Oh, Lisa? Oh, please.
Lisa Grotto, Executive Director, Albany Downtown Association. Just a quick reminder that this Saturday is downtown trick or treat. So from eleven to one, we invite everyone from all areas of Albany and around beyond to come down and trick or treat at our fabulous downtown businesses and maybe enjoy the carousel or a meal or do a little shopping, whatever you enjoy. Altrusa will have a trick or treat book giveaway and that will be centered in the cupboard area in front of Ciberus. So thank you again and please come to downtown Albany on Saturday for trick or treat from eleven to one.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is the ward of a contract.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that we insert an agenda, an agenda item as we discussed previously for recognition?
Fantastic. Is he here?
Yep.
Okay. So should I read this on the microphone?
Judge, would you come up and join us here?
Yes, I'll do it. So I don't know if you guys know this, but Judge Reed is retiring. He's leaving us. Come over here. You demand an hour, come on. So got a few words here I'll say, fumble, stumble through them. Tonight is our privilege to honor Judge Forrest Reed. Judge Reed has been our municipal court judge since January twenty twenty. Mayor? What? You want to use this? No, I don't. What is that? Use that one right there.
It's on, it's not working.
Oh, so don't have to use it.
Well, no, I'm sorry. The ceiling mic is on, but it's not working, so you do have to use this.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Been voluntold.
Yes, sir.
That better? Okay, I'll start over. Tonight is our privilege to honor Judge Forrest Reed. Judge Reed has been our municipal court judge since January twenty twenty. He's also the first judge that they ever hired, so that's really cool. He's not preparing to leave us for grand adventures of retirement. During his tenure as municipal court judge. During his tenure as municipal court judge, he was dedicated to improving the community that he served. He helped establish a mental health court, which I think when I was, the first time was very moving. And I really appreciate your work on this. Thank you. Which has been important and lifeline and support system for many people. He made it a point to connect with and encourage participants in the program, others program, which was often a contributing factor to their success. Registered mental health court would often comment that a key factor in the success was that Judge Reed's kind and guiding words. He helped 53 people successfully graduate the program. Come on now, give it up. I was going to say 35, but you would have liked that. He was a great advocate for our Work Crews program. The program allows people to work in the service for their community in lieu of paying their fines. Because of this, people do not have to choose between paying their court fees or paying for other financial obligations like food. So thank you. This program empowers more people to contribute to our community in meaningful ways. Aside from as a college, as our judge, Forrest is a measurable impact of those around him. He is respected and adored by his clerks for his unflagging.
Unflagging?
Unflagging? I wouldn't use that word. Flagging positive attitude and energy, his vast knowledge and mentorship, and of course, his good nature and sense of humor. And he will greatly be greatly missed and we wish him the best in his retirement. And for me, Judge, knowing you has been an honor. And I really appreciate the time you've given me to learn about your programs and just your guidance in the court. So I do appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
He gets the key to the city. And I was going to give him my gavel, but it wouldn't fit. So he had a little small one. Congratulations, Judge.
Thank you.
I would like Peter to say something before we give him the mic.
Congratulations, Forrest.
Thank you very much.
And I want to add my thanks to you for the collegiality you displayed, the pleasure it was to work with you. I know that your leadership of the court staff was something that they very much appreciated. And you know, in this shadow box, you're going to have several mementos of the City of Albany who's benefited from your devotion to the community. But one of them in there, the mayor mentioned your grand adventures in retirement. There's a coin there, but you are going to be wandering down a beach in Vanuatu. So you'll need to have a coin separately that you can put in your pocket. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Best wishes in retirement.
Thank you. Thank you. Worst thing is to give an attorney a microphone. This will probably be the last opportunity I ever have to address the city. Counsel, I thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to serve as your judge here for this last four years. It was the end of a very good career that I had here in Albany. For about 38 years, I've been practicing law and working here. And I've had to work with a number of you people. I think Albany's in very good hands now. We've got great leadership. We've got great counsel, great mayor. Everything that the mayor has said that I, he attributed to me, it's not to me. It's to my great staff who's back there. I mean, I have the best staff. As I've told Peter, I said, I've got the best staff in the entire city. But I don't want you folks to be concerned about that. But it is the best staff. And they're fun there. Now Gina's not officially on the staff, but she's down there all the time, most of the time. So I've got the two Gina's there. We have April and Jen, and then September's back there. And they made it so fun to come to work every day. And you know, and I see APD here. I see Captain Lyles here. And I know I speak for him and for the other people from APD who just so much enjoyed coming in and not interacting with me, but seeing our staff and talking with the staff. And they were just great. So thank you so much, so much. I really appreciate it. And just one quick story because today, so I'm leaving on Friday. My wife and I are going down to an island called, or a country called Vanuatu, which used to be called New Hebrides. And we're going to do a mission down there for a couple of weeks. And there's six of us going from our church. And I really, I talked to Peter today and said, we're having a meeting tonight. That's why I was going to be late for this gathering. And I didn't, I really don't know what the goal is of our trip down there. I found out tonight we're going to be building some things. But we had the head missionary guy down there. He was on the phone with us and talking. And we were going to this, I don't know. It's just in the middle of nowhere. And it's in between Australia and New Zealand. We land on this main island and take a puddle jumper down. But he said the flights aren't very reliable. So hopefully, we'll get down there on time. Anyway, long story short, he said that everything is on the menu down there. Somebody said, well, what do you eat? Everything's on the menu down there. He showed this picture. He went in and had this rat that he had got, that he had stabbed. And he said, I'm trying to clear out this rat from in the area in this little hut you guys are going to stay in. But he said that they've got a dog down there, and the dog is named Sushi. And so I asked about this dog. He said, you know, if a dog is on the menu down there, why would you name a dog Sushi? It just seems like you've got a target on your back. Well, the thing is, is that what they had done down there, so this guy, this is his dog down there. They had sent Sushi a worm pill, a worm tablet. And so on these worm tablets, on the little container there, it shows that a person is not supposed to eat the worm tablet, you know? So the people down there, the locals, think that if they eat sushi, that they're going to not do well because it shows that this worm tablet's not supposed to be eaten by a person. They've attributed that it's sushi, the dog they're not supposed to eat. And so sushi is off the menu down there, yeah. So that's where I get to go for a few weeks and do that. So thank you so much for everything that we've got.
Big round of applause for the judge, please.
A lawyer in construction.
That's right, yeah.
That's the fun part. Next on tonight's agenda, again, Judge, fair winds and following seas. And have a wonderful time down in Vanuatu. And enjoy your retirement. A ward of a contract number seven on the agenda would be exemption from a competitive bidding, competitive bidding purchase playground equipment, playground surfacing and installation of Lehigh Park. Director Ladain should be here. Pages 110 through 119 of your packet.
Good evening.
Good evening, Director.
Thank you for having me, letting me speak about this. So I was back here in May and asked for an exemption to the competitive bidding process for Lehigh Park. You all were wonderful and said, yes, we can do that. During that time, we were in the middle of a public engagement campaign to kind of get information from the community who would benefit the most from a sensory playground. And after that closed, we heard loud and clear that they love the idea of a sensory playground, but that our surfacing is not, not going to do it. We had proposed wood fiber chips. And those folks with sensory needs, that is the loud and clear one thing that they do not want. And so that leaves us with two options. We can either do a pour and play, which will be like down at the new playground that's going to be at Monty's when that opens, or another product that is called Forever Lawn, which is kind of like AstroTurf. It's the cousin of AstroTurf. It's lovely. It's non-static. And it also provides a very nice sensory experience. So when we did that, we had to make some changes because that product is more expensive than engineered wood fiber. And our competitive, the contract that we were using prior was only for the equipment, not the flooring and not the installation. No problem. We made some adjustments. There is another collective purchasing partner out there, National Purchasing Partner, that not only has the playground equipment, but the surfacing and the installation. So I am back to ask for a change for you to specifically repeal Resolution 7218. That was the original one from back in May that allowed us to use a different cooperative purchasing method. I'm asking for you to authorize us, myself, to award and execute a contract to purchase the playground equipment as well as the surfacing material from Ross Recreation Equipment through the National Purchasing Partner Collective Purchasing Agreement. Sorry, I feel like I'm telling you a tongue twister here. I apologize. For the amount of $236,767. And to approve appropriation transfers from the Community Development Block Grant to the Park Capital Improvement Program, as once again, $155,000 of this is going to be covered through CDBG funds. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Counsel, any questions for the director?
Why not just use regular grass? I'm worried about Forever Lawn degrading in the sun or with use and putting microplastics in our water. We already have so many of those. I just would love to know why.
Sure, so it's a, it's a safety measure. You have to have specific types of surfaces underneath playground equipment that are rated for falls and all that kind of good stuff. And so in order to have a safe and certified play equipment, play space, you have to have it on appropriate surfacing. So I can find some more information about their product. It is very widely used and becoming more and more popular as wood fiber chips are no longer necessarily the
Go-to.
The go-to anymore. And we chatted a little bit internally about the maintenance and upkeep for it as it'll be the first time we've used the product on our end. But we've heard good things from other folks who are using it in the area. For example, it's over at the YMCA. It's been a part of their adaptive playground. So we're excited to bring it on. It'll be an adventure for us, but it has to do with safety regulations.
Are there other options?
Outside.
Outside of a Forever Lawn?
There's pour and play options, which is kind of the poured soft surface material. That's also available, but it does have an additional cost associated with it.
Is that the springy stuff that when you step on it on a playground, you kind of bounce, your feet kind of bounce?
Yes. It has the squishier feel. There are some that are actually in other parts of the world. They actually do have trampoline surfaces. It is not a trampoline surface. But it is, it is the poured soft surface.
And, and a regular lawn? Because I hadn't thought of microplastics. And that's kind of a concern. A regular lawn is not okay? Or is it just that upkeep, someone would have to maintain it?
It, it does not have the appropriate structure underneath to absorb falls. So you, we, in order to put it in a playground, you have to dig down. You have to do sub base and all that kind of good stuff and have appropriate surfacing to make it so that if a kiddo falls off of something, there's less likelihood of them being injured.
Wow. When I was growing up, you fell on the lawn. If you fell off the teeter totter, there was grass.
I've got stories.
I broke my arm falling off of a
Can you elaborate on the price difference?
I don't have it in front of me. I can definitely come back with that. It would definitely move us closer to the $300,000 range.
I'm fine with that.
Could you bring that, get that to us? So Gabe can get it to us?
Sure, I can work on that. I'll also have to look to see if it can work under this collective purchasing agreement. But that's okay. We're figuring it out. So I can look into that.
So we can approve this, right? Because it doesn't impact what they're doing. So we have a resolution. Would the council like to make a motion? Or any more questions for the counselor? The director?
I will make a motion to approve a resolution or repealing Resolution 7218 and approving an exemption from competitive bidding requirements and approving the use of a cooperative purchasing method to acquire playground equipment for Lehigh Park and authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to award and execute a contract to purchase playground equipment using a cooperative contract between National Purchasing Partners and Ross Recreation Equipment, Inc. for $236,767 and approve appropriation transfers from Community Development Block Grant funding to Park Capital Improvement.
I have a motion. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, counselor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you. Your motion's passed.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is adoption of the consent calendar. Would the council like to make a motion? Oh, excuse me, sorry. Approval of an agreement. We just did that. No. Intergovernmental Agreement for Administration of the Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Unified Certification Program. Rob Romeo, Traffic Manager, correct? Traffic Manager?
Transportation Manager.
You've got so many hats. Transportation Manager.
For sure.
Page 120, 134 in your packet.
So good evening, counselors, mayor. I'm Rob Romeo, Transportation Manager. And I'm here to ask your approval to update the City of Albany DBE policy and approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation and Oregon Business Development Department, federal acronyms fund. So I think it's important to keep all of these current with the approvals, to keep up all the projects at the Albany Municipal Airport so we can keep utilizing federal AIP funds, the Airport Improvement Program, money for improvements for the airport. This IGA allows the City of Albany to use the ODOT, UCP, the Unified Certified Program, which opens up their DBE directory for our use. Makes it a lot easier for us to be able to use and utilize this. This IGA will be good for another five-year term. And there are no budget impacts with this approval. So basically, it'll make it short and sweet. So if you guys have any questions.
Any questions from the council? There is no question.
Okay, wonderful.
I have a resolution on page 121. You have a motion?
I move we approve a resolution authorizing execution of an updated intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation and Oregon Business Development Department to partner in the administration of the disadvantaged business enterprise Unified Certification Program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, item nine on the agenda is adoption of the consent calendar. Do our council like to make a motion?
I move we adopt the consent calendar as written.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you very much, counsel. Number 10 is staff report, reclassify 1.0 FTE recreation specialist to recreation coordinator. Director Ladain will be speaking with us again.
Hello again.
Hello.
So I'm here tonight to request that counsel, by motion,[1643.84] So, I'm here tonight to request that council by motion authorize a reclassification of 1.0 FTE Recreation Specialist to become a Recreation Coordinator effective November 1st. As you all know, we've had some staffing changes over the last few years. We recently had a staff member vacate our Recreation Coordinator position to take a job elsewhere. And the staff member we have internally was able to move in because they had backfilled on multiple occasions during maternity leaves and all sorts of fun things. And so, we are fortunate to be able to move that person over to that position. And in looking at the Recreation Coordinator position, they were formerly a specialist. We're not able to remove anything from their workload. So, we want to be able to fairly compensate them for the work that they're going to be able to do in their new capacity. So, are there any questions at?
Counsel, any questions at all for the director?
I think I read that you have it in the budget, correct? Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I've moved to approve the reclassification as requested.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. Good to see you again. Next is business from the council. I'll start with the folks online first. Counselor Kopczynski?
Yes, just like to echo what ADA Director Lisa Grado mentioned. Saturday, we will be having, handing out a lot of candy. And until it lasts, have everybody come on down and have some and take a look and even take a ride on Sir Hugo Page the Griffin, our latest animal. It's been added to the carousel platform. It's number 43. So, come on down and enjoy yourselves.
Thank you. Counsel McGee?
Just one thing. There was someone that was on a commission that I appointed, and unfortunately, that person had to step away due to the racism. Her son has been experiencing gaps, and now she's homeschooling. And I'd just like to say that that is really unfortunate considering that we appoint people from the community to do community work, and they can't even do it due to these situations that are going on and gaps. And I'm not exactly sure what it is we can do to try to prevent or combat those sorts of things. Folks want to get involved. They can't. Their children are being harassed. This is a super concerning issue, and I'm just really, really dismayed by it. So, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Counsel McGee. Counsel Novak?
Thank you. I do have something. We, all of us, I believe, received an email from a constituent regarding open burning, which, did you not get that?
I don't think I did.
Okay. I think everybody was supposed to have seen that. Okay. I, this is something I didn't even know was permitted or legal until it was brought to my attention. I thought when they stopped field burning, that also included all burning. Like, people can't just get a container and burn toxic substances and other substances at their homes, but apparently they do. And that does not seem right to me for a number of reasons, including public safety, environment. The description we received from this constituent was very concerning, and I would very much like to see somebody do something about that because, again, I wasn't even aware that this is okay, and we have people doing it. And it, there's not, it's not being enforced. They're not being told not to. And this just seems really wrong.
I, I don't have an email with that title.
I will forward you what I have.
Please.
Yes, I will.
I think all, I think all of the counselors received it.
Are you, are you done?
Yes, sir. That's all I wanted to bring to everyone's attention tonight.
Thank you.
Because I find it very concerning.
I was gonna bring that up myself. It is illegal to burn construction materials and trash at your home. And when you have a neighbor who's doing that, call the fire department, and they will send someone over and take care of it. That's, I got complaints about that when I worked here, and that's the procedure. It is in, it's in the municipal code.
So, then the gentleman with the, forgive me for...
No, go ahead.
The gentleman with the complaint can just call the fire department, and it will be taken care of?
That's, that's not quite correct.
That's not quite right.
No. And Chief Wooton has sent me some information on this. And, you know, first of all, you have to understand that DEQ allows backyard burning from October 1st to December 15th, and then again from March 1st to June 15th.
I thought that was with a permit, though.
No. No, it's not with a permit. But, and historically, the fire department sometimes, depending on the fire danger, can alter those dates based on, you know, estimated fire risk. But you like fireworks. You know, if you were to enact, if we were to enact a, an outright ban, the fire department does not have the authority to cite an individual. So, it would be a large burden. It could be done, but it would be another burden on code enforcement, on the person that you know, Chris Shindell, who does our code enforcement. DEQ doesn't do much in the way of enforcement for the standard burn pile. And Shane tells me that typically DEQ will send a letter that will say that a fine could be possible if, if an illegal burn is reported. And that what that has to do with is if the materials being burned are egregious, you know, you're burning hazardous materials, they will issue a very hefty fine. But, and lastly, Shane points out that a city ordinance could not be enforced outside the city limits, which is what was, was being asked there in that email. And if, if the council would like, we can, we can bring back some more information on this. But as you can appreciate, it's, it's more than just what meets, meets the eye there. DEQ is primarily responsible for enforcement, but they don't have the...
Bandwidth.
They don't have the bandwidth to do that either.
Thank you.
I, I would like to see somebody do something, though, because he, the gentleman mentioned toxic substances being burned and not being able to go out into his own yard because of nasty toxic chemicals in the air and smoke and impacting his animals and all kinds of things. It just doesn't seem right that... And he said he was on the phone for two hours with the DEQ to no avail. I just, it seems like we ought to be able to do something. That if the DEQ, which is some nebulous agency somewhere that isn't here local and doesn't really care, someone local should be able to... I, I don't know. It just doesn't seem right.
Well, again, like, like with fireworks. And we are gonna come back to the council with fireworks proposals and a discussion about fireworks ban, but it requires enforcement.
Thank you. Counsel Smith, do you have anything else? Counsel Montague? Counsel Newton?
I have two things. So, I've had some folks reach out to me about cell service. It looks like T-Mobile, they have a tower that's out of commission, and it'll be pretty terrible for about a month while they rebuild. So, that's the information I found out. So, if you are utilizing their services, expect really spotty service for the next month. And then, the next thing I have is I had the opportunity with both Marsha and Shane to speak at Sunrise Elementary School to a whole bunch of first graders. And so, I hope you guys are excited for an updated presentation as we're collecting more data on what, you know, just my own little fun pet project of what kids want to see happen here in Albany. So, yeah, excited to share that soon.
Great. So, what did I do last week? I've been so busy with work. I, I did meet with a group of seniors and talk about stuff going on in the city. And I do like that map, the project map. The people in my community, the people that I support and, and serve, love that map. So, I'm really happy that that is up there. And Forrest Reed's retirement, it's a big deal for the city. But I'm sure we have a person that's gonna come in and replace him. And other than that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. You know, you, you participated in recognizing the staff who are responsible for our composting project, and what a, what a great project that is. I wanted to remind the council, though, too, that the council, the previous council, supported this effort from day one. So, you can take some of the credit yourselves for providing support to Kristen Preston. You may remember, we took a field trip and we looked at composting ops. We had a presentation on them, and the council was very supportive. So, thank you to you all as well. Counsel Montague mentioned the cost savings and the innovation that that project represented. And it, it certainly does, and I want to second that. Along those lines, I want to remind you not to forget your bucket of compost in the corner there when you leave this evening. And then, finally, we do have an executive session following. So, I don't anticipate that it will take too long. But if you need a break, that's up to the, up to the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, come back at 8:00 PM. Thank you. The city council will now meet an executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations in accordance with ORS 192.660 subsection 2, subsection D. Representatives of news, media, and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members will be moved into a waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will readmit them to remaining waiting room to rejoin the meeting. Any in-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, staff will open the doors and can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in the executive session. I now recess the executive session at 8:00 PM. Next on the agenda, next meeting dates are Monday, November 6th. Still in the meeting here. Monday, November 6th at 4:00 PM. Here for Work Session, Wednesday, November 8th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. With that, I will adjourn today's meeting. Thank you.